I think we're all here.
Big news, I think we did, yes.
Yep, so you're note takers.
Yes.
Lucky duck. The new road is Kim every night, every meeting.
No.
Okay, we're going to reconvene to open session, the regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District for Tuesday, August 28th, 2018. May we have a roll call, please?
President Black.
Here.
Vice President Stapleton Gray.
Here.
Board Member Blanchard.
Here.
Board Member Clark.
Here.
Board Member Chutain.
Here.
Student Board Member Weinstein.
Here.
Student Board Member Mala.
Here.
For those who wish to participate, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to get.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the reading of the AUST mission and vision statement.
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens.
AUST is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Thank you. The board took no action in closed session. First item is to approve the agenda. Does anybody want any changes to the agenda? Can we have a motion on the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Next is approval of the consent calendar. Does anyone want to make comments on any items in the consent calendar or to pull any items from the consent calendar? And can we have a motion on the consent?
I move the consent calendar.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Board and superintendent, report.
Thank you, President Black, members of the board. First of all, welcome to the first day of school. All schools were open and ready for learning. Our district office directors and myself, we were at various school sites today. I was at the high school, and I will say that by 8:15, students were in class and learning, and some students were getting their IDs. I actually got to help with a little water spill right outside of a classroom, but I have to say the schools were so well cleaned and ready for learning, and I really want to thank all of our teachers who have prepared their classrooms. I want to give a special shout out to our maintenance and custodial crews who made sure that our classes and our schools were ready. I also want to do a special thank you to Golden Gate Fields, who I received a $5,000 check today as a donation, and the board will see that on the warrant report next week, excuse me, at the next board meeting, so I really want to thank Golden Gate Fields for doing that donation. On Thursday and Friday, our Albany Unified School District staffed attended the Tools for Tolerance training. That is from our preschool all the way up through high school. Sarah White from the Museum of Tolerance, she's a trainer across the country, and she came and provided training for all of our staff. And I really want to thank Marie Williams for organizing this with our principals and our staff to make this training happen. What I really like about the Tools for Tolerance is there's a lot of free resources that she provided for our teachers, so they were able to walk away with a lot of information and tools that they could use in the classroom. And finally, just want to remind the public that our mati act notice for our Budget Advisory Committee closes tomorrow, and we're encouraging those who are interested in the positions to please make sure that they apply. We're looking for, in and out in the community, two parents, so I'm really encouraging folks to apply if you want to be part of our Budget Advisory Committee. Thank you, and that's my report.
Thanks. Other board members? Charlie?
So, I took the opportunity this morning to go walk around to three of our sites during opening of school, so I first went to the high school, then Cornell Elementary, and then Albany Middle School, conveniently timed so I could be there just at the start of school sequentially for each one. And I just want to echo the superintendent's comments. Everything was well organized, it was smooth. I mean, not everybody knew what room they were going to or where they were, where the rooms were, and the principals were there to answer those questions, so it was, it was very, very encouraging to see. And I just wanted to give a shout out to everybody for being really ready for first day of school. I did pay particular attention at Albany High to the impact of the construction zone. It seemed to be very neat and tidy and didn't seem to be interfering with the flow of traffic.
Thanks. Kim?
Just to add on to trustee Blanchard's, I was volunteering today in a AHS classroom where I could look down and see the construction area, and it is absolutely flat. There is nothing left inside that fence. It's ready for building, so it was good to see that they were able to do all of the demolition over the summer where it would not disturb students and the learning in the classroom. I'll also mention that member Blanchard and I are both on the Ocean View design team, and we've had some meetings over the summer, and I am happy to say that through a long process and a lot of thought, I think we have arrived at a design for the new Ocean View that does involve us saving a couple of the existing buildings and building some really wonderful new classrooms. I believe 34 classrooms total on that site, and I think that things are moving along so that we can take that project through the bidding process and into the design-build team system in, over the next, well, during the entire school year. Thank you.
Thanks. Others?
Yeah, I just want to thank our entire staff for a successful first day of school, and I also want to wish our staff, as well as the students, my children included, to just have a very successful and productive and fun school year.
Thank you. Okay, student board members, report.
Hey. So at AHS, after a long summer, students received and compared their schedules at orientation on Thursday, the 23rd. Students navigated new pathways through their school as they await the new building at AHS. This fall, Albany High School introduced a women's water polo team. They have started practicing and are looking forward to showing their cougar spirit in the water.
For AMS, students returned to, at orientation on the 23rd and 27th, and in the start of this new year, AMS is making efforts to improve communication with families. A survey is posted on their website to receive feedback about the Cobra Connection and the Cobra Monthly Newsletter.
At Marin Elementary School, parents can go to back-to-school night to talk to their kids' teachers, see classrooms, and learn about the curriculum. September 6th for parents of kindergarteners, and September 13th for parents of first through fifth graders.
Come to Cornell Community Time from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. on Wednesday, September 5th on the playground, and for Cornell, back-to-school night will be hosted on Thursday, September 13th at 7:00 p.m.
And then at Ocean View, back-to-school night will be hosted on September 13th. That's it.
Any questions for the students? Good. That brings us to persons to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here to do that?
I'm sorry, I should have brought this up earlier. I see that there's students in the audience, and I wonder if they're there because of our, our review and action item, number two, the Albany High School Behavior Matrix. And in the interest of them getting home and being able to do their homework, could we, could we switch number one and number two under review and action?
I believe we also have somebody waiting for 1A, so can we just switch two in, 2A in between 1A and 1B?
I think Val wants to speak.
Sorry, just point of clarification. The Albany High School principal and vice principals are planning to be here for this item, and if we move it, they're not here right now, so they were planning on being here to address, to be here for this item.
Okay, so we should wait until later?
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Okay, then we have a staff report. Education update, English learner program.
Thank you, President Black. In accordance with the ASD's Board Policy 6174, the purpose of this item is to provide a report of the progress on the district's English learners. I'm going to turn this over to Marie Williams, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Thank you, Superintendent Williams. Good evening, Board President Black, board members, and community. This staff report was prepared actually for the last school year, and in the interest of time, I wasn't able to deliver it, so it's going to be very brief this evening, although I'm really excited to be kicking off our first board meeting of the school year, talking about student outcomes. This really is sort of setting us up for at least sort of the first semester of talking about how students are doing as we prepare to revisit the LCAP process, Local Control and Accountability Plan process. So, my presentation will be brief this evening, and you will hear about the progress of English learners and other reports during the school year when we talk about things like graduation rates, and when we get updated smarter balanced summative assessment results. English learners, though, are one student group that are measured on their own as a group, in addition to included in the other student groups represented at our schools, so we are required to talk about them as a separate group. What you will see... Apparently, it's been a long summer, and I forgot how to use the screen mover. Hold on just a second. Okay, there we go. There we go. Okay. So, as Superintendent Williams said, we do have a board policy that requires that we report on the progress of English learners. This first slide just shows enrollment at each of our schools, AUST English learner enrollment. This enrollment is captured in October at the census period, and there sort of are some changes and fluctuations. You'll see sort of the most dramatic changes at Ocean View Elementary. We tend to have a lot of families request to attend Ocean View, especially those families who are residing in the village, but we really want to, wherever possible, distribute all of our students throughout the district and expose them to all of our wonderful schools. So you'll see that there are some increases also at some of the other schools where enrollment has historically been lower. This slide just talks a little bit about the allocated staffing at each of our schools. In addition to ELD specialists, we also have classroom teachers who provide instruction in English language development. And in the box on the right side, I did just want to call out and highlight some of the many things that our ELD specialists do throughout the year on behalf of our English learners. Our specialists are really strong ambassadors for our English learners. In addition to pushing into classrooms, they also this year, last year, took on sort of the lion's share of transitioning from the California English Language Development Test, or CELT, to the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, the ALPAC. And so I did just want to highlight some of the things that they are doing when they are not in classrooms working with students. When I arrived in 2016-17, we were struggling with enrollment at our district English learner advisory committee meetings, and so our English learner specialists were very gracious and let me crash some of their meeting times, and so at least twice a year, we host joint district English learner meetings as well as site meetings, and so that helps to get a lot more families out and congregated at the middle school, and so I want to appreciate that also. And then last year in particular, and you're going to hear more about the summer bridge program in a staff report at the next meeting on September the 11th, but this year, ELD specialists were really instrumental in working with the summer school principal, Mrs. Duncan, to ensure that we were able to offer a really robust summer bridge program for our English learners. If you'll remember, we tried to operate that program in the past couple of years and weren't able to because of not being able to sustain enrollment, but did a really nice job this year of being able to get a lot of students recruited and staying in the program, and Mrs. Duncan will talk to you about that at our next board meeting. So, the next two slides just highlight the performance of our English learners in our district. Overall, our English learners produce really great academic outcomes, both in the areas of English, language arts, and mathematics on the smarter balanced summative assessment, and then also when we look at the English learner progress indicator, which is a component of the California dashboard, you'll see that from the 15-16 to 16-17 school year, we did see an increase in the percentage of students making progress in learning English.
Charlie? That was, oh, yeah, yeah, actually, you're doing what I was hoping you would do, which is go back to that slide right there, and thought maybe we could just take a minute and appreciate row two in that slide?
I was just about to talk about that.
Great, thank you.
So there was a question about potential, potential reasons for the outstanding performance of our re-designated fluent English proficient students, and as I noted in the responses to the questions to the board, one of the reasons maybe is that in order for our English learners to be re-designated, they have to meet and or exceed standards on the English language arts portion of the smarter balanced summative assessment. So, these are students that are performing at a really high level as English learners that then, when they become re-designated, then those results are carrying over.
Sorry, I think as well as appreciating row two, I think that we should spend a moment and just acknowledge row four, because what row four indicates is that for the past, well, for those years, that statewide, California students are not meeting standards in either English or math. So, there is, the majority of students in California in the public school system are not meeting standards, which is a sad thing to have to acknowledge.
Yeah, and you know, I typically don't put statewide results because our students perform so well district-wide, but this was particularly startling because not only are all of our district students way, outperforming statewide students, but also our English learners as a student group are outperforming all students statewide. So, I think that really sort of punctuates that point, so I appreciate you saying that. This next slide basically sort of takes a lot of different measures of English learner progress and adds them all together and divides by the total number of students taking tests, and that gives you the percentage of students that are making progress on the English learner indicator, and then at the end, I'll talk a little bit about how this is all going to change, because the, we've changed English learner test, and so then that changes the way that we will calculate progress for students learning English. And at least for a couple of years, we will have just status only, but won't be able to measure growth as we have done for at least the past year. These next two slides speak to the percentage of students at risk of becoming long-term English learners, and then the next slide addresses students identified as long-term English learners. And so here, what you'll notice that, is that at the younger grades, so when you take, here, I'll go back so you can look at the headings here. So that first column, AUST English learners, shows all of the district's English learners. The next column, English learners who have been in our district for four to five years is a little smaller number, and then students at risk of becoming English learners are 27% of the subset of 37, and not the 85, but sort of in...
Could you define long-term English learners?
Yes. So if you look here on the left side of the slide, English learners at risk of becoming long-term English learners are students who have been enrolled in US schools for four or five years, scored at the intermediate or below level the prior year of CELT, and that will change, and then also scoring in the, in their fourth or fifth year at a standard not met level on the prior year California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, or SBACK, test.
We ask this every year, but do you know, just, do you happen to know, do you collect the data, what portion of these long-term English learners have been in Albany schools for their entire time?
We did, we did collect data about the performance of Albany attending English learners, but we didn't look particularly at students at risk of being long-term English learners or at students who are identified as long-term English learners, but I would be happy to research that information and maybe provide it in a Friday update for you in the next few weeks or so here. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I would say too, that sort of these typically are enrollment patterns for English learners are such that students will be with us for maybe a short period of time, and then they are transitioning out of our schools. So when we look at the numbers of students both identified as at risk of becoming English learners, and then students who are identified as English learners, I would speculate that these are students who have been with us, been in Albany schools for a longer period of time, but I certainly will try that hypothesis with data and provide a response to you. And so, the other thing I think, just to sort of mention, is that how we are defining students at risk of becoming long-term English learners, and then also students identified as long-term English learners, will be a little more tricky because we are changing our English learner test, so we don't know sort of how those two tests are going to sort of speak to each other in terms of sort of what it looks like for ALPAC as opposed to CELT. The other thing to note is that students in grades nine and 10 don't take, and SBACK don't take a smarter balanced test, where with the previous system, students at every grade level were taking that test. And so I would anticipate that there might be some changes there also in being able to identify students as long-term English learners. I think these two slides also speak to me about the need for some more local ongoing measures of how students are doing, rather than waiting for this data, which often comes at the end of the year or is based on very old metrics. So the last thing I wanted to talk about are all the changes that are happening in terms of English learner testing. So, this slide, I think I showed in the 16-17 year where we talked about the transition from CELT to ALPAC, and so that changeover has happened, and so what students will experience this year is something a little different in terms of the assessment piece. So in prior years, students would, students who were new to our schools would, within 30 days of being in our schools, take an initial assessment. That would help to identify if they were English learners or if they were initially fluent and didn't need English learner services. And then in the, right when school started, so from July and then through August, students who were previously identified as English learners would take their annual CELT test to see were they making progress, were they maybe in line to be re-designated, so exited out of, out of ELD. With the ALPAC, students will still need to be tested within 30 days of their first entry into US schools, and a piece that's different this year is that the state is requiring that we send up prior notification to families about this testing requirement, and I would say I received maybe about half a dozen responses from families saying, "Oh, I think we made a mistake," or "I don't think we need to take this test," or, "Oh, you know, I think we'd just like to waive that." And so as I explained to parents, we're not able to waive that initial assessment, because if families answer a language other than English for one of four questions we ask them, which are, "What language is most frequently spoken at home?" "What was the child's first spoken language?" "What language does the child hear at home?" And then there's another one that I won't remember right now. If families answer other than English, we're required to provide the initial assessment, and that does not mean that students will require ELD services, but we have received some feedback from parents about that, so just mention that. So we've drafted a letter that will go out to families who have a question about that. The big change for this year in terms of ALPAC is that we're not doing the additional, the annual assessment at the beginning of the year anymore. We're doing it in the spring, and depending on the grade level, that is happening at about the same time that students are taking the smarter balanced assessment, so it's another test occurring in the spring, which is a lot maybe for students who are coming and are enrolling in US schools for the first time. So, this year, students will take an initial assessment, and as long as they arrive in our school district for the first time in a US school by May the 31st, they're also required to take the summative assessment. So, a student who came on the 1st of May would take their initial assessment and would also take a summative assessment. So that is new too, and, and put some pressure on our English learners and sort of exposes them pretty quickly to our testing-heavy environment, I would say, or culture. For students who take the ELA assessment, though, who have been here for fewer than 12 months, they're not counted in our SBACK results. It used to be that if they wanted to, they could take the test and have it counted, but the state was concerned about districts forcing English learners to take that test in order to get our participation rate, so those students will be excluded. So, it will be good information for them, but won't, won't count in our scores. So, students this year, new students have already begun taking the initial assessment. It's really very different. The tests used to be scored by our teachers, who are really very familiar with that test. Now, the test is being scored electronically, and so we are, with the ELD specialists, we are trying to figure out what that means for initial placement, what that means for reclassification, what that means for, for the program, and how we sort of learn to incorporate this new ALPAC assessment information into our current ELD program. So that's all I want to say about that, which was sort of a lot. I'll be back in a few weeks to talk about some other measures of student performance and progress, and again, we'll talk about English learners as a part of that, but this is it for now, unless anybody has any questions.
Do we have any questions? Ross?
Not a question so much as a comment. On the other side of the coin, foreign language instruction in our schools, and just to note again, that it's rather depressing that we first start offering foreign language as a seventh-grade class and not as a seven-year-old sort of, you know, exercising folks when their, when their brains are most ala- sort of, you know, exercising folks when their brains are most elastic and able to cope with that. I would love to see us, and I don't know as budget permits, but I would love to see us become a more multilingual district sort of by intent rather than merely by the folks that show up. But, you know, kudos to anybody out there who's learning English as their second language because they're learning a second language.
Any other comments, questions, any from the audience? Thank you.
Thank you.
First review and action item is the appointment of a North Region CELPA Community Advisory Committee member.
Thank you, President Black Trustees, and the purpose of this item is for the appointment of Kathleen Marte as our North Region CELPA Community Advisory Committee member who will be representing the Albany Unified School District. And I'm going to turn this over to Diane Marie, who is our Director of Special Education.
Good evening. I come to the board tonight and ask that you appoint Kathleen Marte as the district's representative to our North Region CELPA CAC. CELPA is the Special Education Local Plan Area, and our CELPA is the North Region CELPA, and it's comprised of Albany, Alameda, Berkeley, Piedmont, and Emery. CAC is our Community Advisory Committee, and each district is getting one parent approved to represent the district at those meetings. And Kathleen has agreed to be our representative, and she's here tonight. And does anybody have any questions?
Charlie.
Well, first of all, thank you. I think Kathleen must be the person sitting in front of me, so thank you very much for volunteering. Hi. And I just had one question, and it might be for you or Kathleen, I'm not sure. And that is that we often like to have our appointees to committees or our representatives come back to the board at some point and just talk to us a little bit about what's happened. And I know this is bigger than a district committee because this is the, you know, the five districts that constitute the CELPA. So I'm not sure if that would work for you or not, but I think, you know, this is a Community Advisory Committee. We'd love to hear an update of some kind at some point.
Absolutely. Kathleen is indicating that she'd be willing to do that. And we also have Katie Babcock from the North Region CELPA here today, and I'm certain that the three of us could put together a report on the Community Advisory Committee.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Do any of you want to say anything?
I'll just say I-
You need to come up to the mic, I'm sorry.
Hi, good evening. I have been participating in this committee for several years. I also participated in Contra Costa, and I find it very valuable. I learn a lot about a lot of different resources for my son, and I want to be able to help it grow. The parent population is kind of small, and so I've been trying to help promote it also. And I'd be happy to come back to talk to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? We have a motion to approve the appointment of Kathleen Marte as a North Region CELPA Community Advisory Committee member.
I make a motion to approve the appointment.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for being able to serve. This brings us to an independent contractor agreement between AUSD and Sonia Biggs Educational Services.
This is a standard contract for Albany contracting with a provider for the teacher of the visually impaired. We currently have four students who receive that service, and we need to appoint a care provider, or a service provider for those students.
Okay. Can you describe a little bit what she does for the students?
Her agency provides services for students with visually impaired. It might be helping the students learn to use a scanner, helping the students learn to scan while reading. It provides a consultation to our staff. It provides consultation to the sites as to how to set up rooms, how to seat students with visual impairments. None of our students are Braille readers, so it's low-vision services to the students and consult to our staff.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Questions, comments from the audience? Do we have a motion to approve this contract?
So I move we approve the contract with Sonia Biggs Educational Services.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a discussion of the Albany High School Behavior Matrix and possible approval of it.
Thank you, President Black Trustees. The purpose of this item is for the board to review and hopefully approve the Albany High School Behavior Matrix. We do have here Carrie Nierheim, our Director of Student Services, as well as Alexa Ritchie, the Principal of Albany High School, and Larry Pratt, our Vice Principal of Albany High School. Dr. Nierheim.
Thank you. Good evening, President Black, and our board, Superintendent Williams, and community members. Happy first day of school, everyone. I'm going to be turning it over to Ms. Ritchie and Mr. Pratt, but I do want to let everyone know how much time and attention has gone into this document. I think it's an elegant document, and I'm hoping that it will cover the ground that we need to so that we can move forward with it. So I'm going to turn it over. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. Just a quick introduction again, Alexa Ritchie from the high school. And thank you, Dr. Nierheim. We have been working quite diligently on this document, but we've also been working quite diligently on the practices that are on the document. So I really want to commend my assistant principals and really the admin team. Last year was the pilot year of this Behavior Matrix, and I'm actually very excited to share, and I think we shared last time we met, some of the statistics and data that are demonstrating that this is a viable matrix that students are reacting positively to. We're also working through our circles with the staff, and we're very excited to be working with our students and our community members if this gets passed this evening. The purpose of the matrix is to address student behaviors at a level that really does prevent those behaviors as much as possible from recurring. And one of the historical pieces that we have been contemplating, of course, is discipline grids, such as the one Albany High School had in effect for a number of years, often produced inequitable outcome when it came to which students were, kind of dealt the consequences. And to put it bluntly, we had more boys and we had more students of color involved with those consequences. So now our approach is to really address the root behaviors, and that crosses all cultural and economic and academic boundaries to where we're hoping that this matrix, again, provides more equitable outcomes for all students.
So just to add a little to that, so I think some of the most valuable work we've been doing is beginning to roll out, implement some of our socio-emotional and social justice competencies. I think those doing that work has began to equip some of the staff with some valued tools that will help us look at students and their situations independently, help them work through and guide their decision-making moving forward. And I think that's what Alexa was looking to earlier when she was saying, we're looking at a behavior modification system so that we can help students first get to the root of what caused the problem behavior and help them to make better decisions going forward.
We have questions from the board.
Yes, I do. I wanted to start off thanking everyone who's put all the time and effort into the matrix. I can tell you guys have spent a lot of time. And overall, I'm very satisfied with the product. I just had one statement I would like to make first and then just a couple of questions. So the statement I would like to make is I still kind of have an issue with calling it "the part in the red" where it says restorative practices are voluntary for all parties. You call it voluntary, but then if the student exercises their right to not participate in the restorative practices, other consequences may be issued. So that's not so much a question, it's just a statement that I still have a little bit of a hard time coming to terms with. And as far as my question, the first one would be, so if the student chooses not to and other consequences may be issued, are those other consequences not listed anywhere? Because before it says, within a box, any of them can be used. So what do you mean by other consequences? Something that's not in this document at all?
No, we would stick to the options that are located within that box of the infraction that the student committed. Within that box, we have a number of options. You'll see a thread through are some restorative practices. A thread through is also some more traditional consequences. So within each of the matrices, we do have options depending on the severity of the infraction and the willingness and the voluntariness of all parties to participate.
Okay, so thank you. I was just wondering if possible consequence was nowhere in this document, and you're saying whatever consequence is determined by your staff or you, it's somewhere in this document.
We would, we would use it with fidelity, but if there were something more effective and creative with a particular individual, we would certainly explore that as a team that's working with that student.
Thank you. And then the last one, I've been communicating with Val, and I thank you guys for taking time trying to, you know, sometimes I don't ask my question, or I think it's clearly, I think it's clear what I'm asking.
That's great.
And sometimes I don't always get the response that I would like. So the last one, I'm still a little hung up on is if a student falls in Level Two for whatever infraction, right, and then they choose not to participate in the restorative practices, can that all of a sudden push them into Level Three?
I would hope not. I would hope that within Level Two, we would have enough options to satisfy what that student needed to address their behavior.
Yeah, because "I hope not" is not kind of clear enough because I don't think a student, whatever the infraction is, should be in the Level Two, but then for whatever reason they choose not to, now it's been bumped up to not the options within that box to take them to a whole nother.
No, we would, we would never do that. No, within the column of their infraction, and this would indicate, for example, this could be the student's first infraction, Level Two might be the same exact behavior, but it's the second infraction, so we need to address some of those issues in a different way. Or the third infraction would bump us up to the third level. It could be, and we've discussed this as well, an infraction might be so egregious that we might decide that anything on the matrix would be applicable. But again, we would look very clearly at the student circumstances, and maybe Mr. Pratt can address this as well. It would be rare, if not something that we wouldn't be able to defend if we just jump through without going through the chain of command of this matrix that we propose.
Try one more time. Thank you. So for Level Two, it says moderate behavior, right? So the student initially is falling under Level Two, so it's a moderate behavioral infraction. Then they choose not to do restorative justice. Does it turn into a severe behavioral one?
No.
The same offense, you know what I'm saying? The offense hasn't changed.
No, no. The answer to that is no.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank, thank you, all of you.
Ross?
You know, two comments. First to address, the first thing Jacob was commenting on is it's almost like there's a missing sentence here, which says, you know, "all actions within a box may be used for each student action." It is our, you know, sincere hope that the best route of restorative justice, et cetera, is a way to resolve this. And it is not, you know, you have your right not to participate in that and other, et cetera, et cetera. So having that sort of aspirational, "we'd really like to address this in the best possible way for all parties," and it is your right to sort of opt out of that if you choose. Second is I'm now about a month into a new job as involving, say, security and privacy compliance, and it's absolutely generating policies on this order. But where the rubber meets the road is a much shorter, simpler, you know, expression of the ideas of this that anyone at the organization knows. And that's my big challenge in the coming year is going to persuade everybody at the organization that privacy and security of data is really an important thing. And so the students at Albany High, ideally a year from now, will say yes, being kind to each other and accepting, you know, just punishment if we, you know. They're not going to be reading this on a daily basis, I really sincerely hope. So conveying the gist of this and the spirit of this to the student body is a huge task, and I wish you luck in doing so.
Thank you.
Kim?
I want to express my sincere thanks for the site administration for removing the idea that possession of a phone, put away in a backpack and silenced, is in itself an infraction. I imagine that site staff has been surprised at the interest that the board has taken in this Behavior Matrix, but I think that we're really convinced that this is a foundational document. And if this is really exactly what you mean, then this is something that students will trust and can build on their understanding of what behaviors are acceptable. And I appreciate the removal of possession of the phone as being an infraction because I know that almost all of our students carry phones, and I think what they need to do is they, they need to learn how to use them responsibly. And I think that the way that it is written here, "use without permission," "teacher deems the device to be a distraction," will adequately cover the situations that need to be addressed. So again, deep appreciation. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Yes.
I had a question about the electronics portion. Michaela and I were talking about this before, and we were wondering if there was some clause that said if there was a photo taken without a person's consent on school grounds, if that would result in punishment?
Yes, I think you'll actually find that in other spots, including harassment and other pieces that might also be connected to that person committing that act. Absolutely.
Thank you.
It is interesting.
I see another, I remember there's sexual harassment, it's present, and-
So I'd like to make a suggestion, if I may, because we had a very short conversation earlier when a student board member just asked me if they could bring this up in public comment. Is it possible, under the electronics portion, between the section where it says "use without permission," "teacher deems necessary," and the one there, between that and "recording a fight to post on social media," can a very simple statement that says, "taking a picture, recording a student without their permission," maybe like a one-sentence piece in there, it may be embedded somewhere else around harassment, but since this is under electronic device, it may be worth putting a very simple line in that one section?
So just to point out, under harassment and bullying, we did, and you can read it for yourself, but we included all kind of communication options, including spoken, written, and electronic, which could be ongoing, could be one time, of course, but we would address it under the harassment and bullying.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I may, I really want to make sure, does that address the issue that the student board members raised around taking a picture of a student? Do you feel that it raises?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think the issue is not taking the picture, it's taking the picture and posting it, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Jacob?
Yeah, the sentence that Ms. Ritchie just read, I think is very clear, and I don't think it would be that much harder to put it under electronics. So it's there again. I hear what you're saying. Somebody might just, oh, this is an electronic issue. I mean, so it's the same wording.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it was clear.
And then slide to them where you had, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Right. Or you could just say, "also see harassment and bullying," just to make sure people know that it's in there.
Oftentimes, there's multiple infractions, and so we would not just include, let's say, the one-line item that applied. We would use everything that applied.
Actually, I really like the idea of a reference like "see harassment and bullying," at least it's in that section, so there is a connection?
Yeah. I guess to go back to my comment, it would help to have things like examples. So if you've got a good example of, you know, Johnny takes pictures of Janie, and it's very clear she doesn't want that. This is harassment. Remember that this is also- Remember that this is also going to be very situational. The Morgan Hill case that went up to the Supreme Court said that the school could say, "You cannot wear that obnoxious T-shirt. You're inciting unrest, you're inciting, you know, you are, this is an incitement." And the shirt had an American flag on it, but because it was Cinco de Mayo, and because it was essentially to protest and to annoy a group of people, that was deemed, that was an okay thing for the school to do that. So there are going to be these gray areas, and someone doing this with intent to harassment should be stopped. I could imagine scenarios where someone's taking pictures and it's not a problem. If they're putting it on social media, if they're egging on a fight, absolutely. So there are going to be some areas where it's your judgment call, but I'm hoping we make it clear, you know, the why, why this is a problem, and harassment is clearly a problem. So maybe generating some scenarios so that you can talk with the students about them. Why is it a problem that? Your phone is a doorway into social media and the harassment that may happen there, that sort of a thing.
Do you have any training planned around the metrics so that the teachers, staff, and students know what's in it?
Well, we've used the concentric circle model to actually vet it through our staff last year. So we gave it to them in chunks, they were able to process through pieces at a time, they gave us some feedback. This is a live document, so we're able to adjust as needed. And right now, we are ready and willing to work with our student leadership and our student body to at least ask the question, how should this, and when should this, and who should this be given to, in really thoughtful ways, from ninth grade through 12th grade. And of course, we're also working with Albany Middle School. One of the targets of this project was to align the practices at least middle school and high school, and so we'd like to work with them as well. When that happens, then obviously the community is going to get heavily involved in their feedback, and we're happy to take that process on. Again, with the knowledge that this is a live document, and when we get feedback, and when we get some data that describes the effectiveness, we're able to adjust and just bring it back to the board and let you know what our adjustments are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Michaela?
Yeah, yeah, I had a couple of them. When you say counselor referral, are you talking about guidance counselors or mental health counselors?
It could be anybody, depending on the situation.
Okay.
In fact, we saw last year, when we had an increase in counseling referrals, we also saw a decrease in out-of-school suspensions and a few more in-school suspensions. But we did see a significant uptick in the number of students who had a counseling referral. And again, it could be academic, it could be mental health, it could be their case manager, if they happened to have a special education plan. A counseling referral just, in essence, means the whole child counseling.
Okay. The second question was, when you're talking about the tardy policy, you said first through third tardies were the first offense. When you're talking about tardies, do you mean tardies per class? Or like if you get three tardies per class, then you have to, then that's a first offense? Or would you mean three tardies in total?
It's probably three tardies per class, and we can specify that here. But again, every situation is absolutely different, and so if we can go back and really kind of pinpoint if it's per class or per period, we can certainly include that here. That's a good question.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's a lot of students I know that I was talking to last year who would be concerned, "Oh, my God, you know, I'm tardy all the time."
Right, and we also work in conjunction with our staff, and so if there's a teacher who tells us, "This is the third tardy for my class for this student, but I need some intervention," of course, we would step in. We might use this, and we might just have a discussion with that student. But just three tardies across the board, I'm not quite sure if that would trigger anything.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was asking. Yeah, so then I had two questions, one about the sexual harassment policy, and then the second about the hate acts and then hate speech messaging policies. For the sexual harassment policies, there was a couple suggestions that I wanted to make for the first, second, and third offenses. For the first offense, I wanted to suggest a research and writing assignment about a history of sexual assault. I think that when students are immersed in how horrible the problem actually is, it gives insight about how it's not okay to make sexual assault offenses, and I know that has been a problem in our school for a very long time and will continue to be. But I think if our students are trying to learn about a history of sexual assault and why it persists and why it is so horrible in our world, then I think that'll help us move on. I also would say that a required meeting with a mental health counselor would be a really good idea. I understand that our mental health counselors are very overworked, but I believe anybody who is committing a sexual assault act should be meeting with a mental health counselor, so that's another suggestion I had. For all three offenses, I think that both of those should hold. For the second offense in sexual harassment, it says one to three-day suspension. I actually think that if you have sexually assaulted a person or multiple people and continue to do so, I think a three-to-five-day suspension is more appropriate. I know I'm harsh on that, but I think, I'm sharing my opinion. And then for the third offense, I actually think that considering expulsion would be a really good idea, because I know that, like I said, sexual harassment has been a problem in our district for a very long time, and I think if we were serious about it, it would actually help eradicate the problem.
Thank you.
And then for the hate acts and hate speech, can I, should I move on or respond?
Go ahead.
Okay, cool. For the hate acts, I would say a one-day suspension should be considered on the first offense even, for the hate acts. I know that you guys see the hate speech slash messaging, but I see that in hate speech slash messaging first offense, there isn't a one-day suspension that is considered. So I think considering that for any hate act would be a really good idea. I know that last year, there were Heil Hitler salutes in the hallways, and swastikas drawn on desks and books. I think contacting your guardian is not enough to eradicate that problem. I think a one-day suspension might give a better message, so I would like that to be considered for a first offense. I also think that a required meeting with a mental health counselor for any of the hate acts during any of the first, second, or third offenses should be required. I think on the second offense, a three-to-five-day suspension, and then also on the third offense, a three-to-five-day suspension, and considering expulsion should be included. That's all. Thank you.
That's great. I suggest you write all that down.
Yeah, I did.
And send it to the principal.
Yeah, yeah, and thank you guys so much for working on this. I think it's really needed at our school, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jacob?
Yeah, I want to thank you so much for speaking up about that. I know you guys have worked really, really hard, and it looked like we were going to vote on it tonight. I don't know if there's a way that you guys can research this a little bit more and think that if some of the consequences she's suggesting are...
Well, just to chime in, I do want to thank you for your considerations. One of the things that we have to do is align this with educational codes, which really do kind of let us know what we can suspend for and what we can't suspend for, you know? So for example, as we're going through this, remember, one of the objectives is to ensure that as many times as possible, students are not sent home, that are not suspended. So again, the whole shift to bringing them back into the school, for bringing them back into the circle and to repair the damage that they've done, that ultimately is going to be one of the goals that we really try to work on. And jumping to a suspension was something that the old discipline grid encouraged everybody to do. This is not that document. This is a completely different document, so you and I can talk about the alignment that we've already researched, when it comes to where our jurisdiction is to suspend, and when the encouragement is to keep the student in school and to, again, repair the damage that was done.
Charlie, and then Kim, and then Ross.
So I had a couple of comments, but first, I actually wanted to pick up on Michaela's suggestions and support her suggestions or recommendations. One thing I think you maybe could do is that Michaela was, I think, looking at the section that's titled "sexual harassment," and I think you could add a pointer in that section, because there's another section under "assault" which mentions "sexual assault," and the consequences are much more in line with what Michaela was referring to. When she used the word "sexual assault," if you look at the consequences under the section, it's the last box under "assault," there we do have "suspension pending expulsion process." And so there is this distinction that is drawn in the document between sexual harassment and sexual assault, and it would be helpful, I think, if there was a pointer placed in the section that's called "sexual harassment" that just directed people to the section where assault is actually described. I think that would help a lot. So otherwise, I think those were great suggestions, I just wanted to endorse them. I have no specific suggestions. We've been through a lot of these several times already. I did want to appreciate the direction that you've gone with this toward creating positive pathways back to good behavior for people. I think that's what we're looking for. And I thought it might be useful if, at the end of the school year, you might be able to come back to the board and tell us something more about what your experience has been this year using it.
Absolutely. We'd love to share that data with you.
Thanks. Kim?
I just wanted to point out to everyone that it says at the beginning of the document that Level 1 is not necessarily where you would go for a first offense. If an offense is really egregious, you can immediately jump to Level 2 or even Level 3. So this relies on the judgment and discretion of the administrative staff. So you're not limited to a Level 1 consequence if you're faced with a very horrific act. You can, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you for...
I have another comment on one of Michaela's suggestions. I really liked your idea that the student be required to do research. I would just add on to that a suggestion that they be required to present the research orally, because if they downloaded it from the internet, at least they will have to have read it in order to do that. Charlie, would you?
We can look into that while also protecting their privacy.
Yeah, I mean, it could be in private orally to the teacher or somebody, but at least prove that they've read the report, even if they hadn't written it themselves.
Agreed, yeah.
As Ms. Ritchie pointed out, this is a living document, and I expect that there's going to be changes this year and, you know, in the future. So it's not the be-all and end-all right on the page right now. Given the work that has gone into this and the direction that it's moving in, I would recommend, I would move that we approve the behavior matrix for the high school.
Thanks. Michaela, did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, I did. I also do agree with you, but I wanted to make one more comment about the sexual assault. You had said something about, in assault battering and fighting, you had said, "There's something listed about sexual assault that more aligns with what I was talking about, how sexual assault should be addressed," but it lists sexual assault as aggressive and unwanted sexual slash intimate contact. Oftentimes, before that happens, there's many situations that occur that are not aggressive and unwanted sexual slash intimate contact. They're much more subtle, and I think those should be addressed in the same serious manner that I was suggesting earlier, without there having to be that extremely aggressive contact. Yeah.
Audrey?
I didn't, thank you for providing this, but I think it's really well done. Also, I noticed a lot, this is all for the perpetrator, not the victim, so is there any, like, apology letter for any of these offenses that the person committing them can make?
That's kind of encapsulated in the restorative process. So the circle could be written, it could be person to person, but there is some sort of reciprocity, and it certainly is at a more emotional level than it is, let's say, a financial level. There is something that has to be given, whether it's going to be a letter, whether it's going to be a conversation with them. And when you look at the parties, you're going to be asking, are you comfortable with which venue? Are you going to be comfortable having a conversation with them, or would you prefer, let's say, something in writing? So we would actually give that agency to the, the term "victim" is really a harsh one to use, but certainly the recipient needs to be able to have that agency to decide what's the better venue for them. And that's really what restorative practices try to target.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion from Kim to approve this matrix. Do we have a second?
All right, second.
Any more comments, questions from the audience before we vote? Okay.
There's two.
Sure, please come up to the mic.
I just had a quick question. If the restorative practices are going to be facilitated by somebody that's trained in restorative justice or not?
By our staff or outside staff?
Just to kind of elaborate, again, this was a piloted program last year, and I really want to give thanks to my admin team, and in particular, Mr. Pratt, who came in already being trained in restorative practices. He was an excellent role model, and he was able to facilitate actually a number of restorative circles last year. And if there were no headlines, then I think we did it right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Olga?
Welcome back. I just wanted to ask if there's, I was in a conference in Detroit this summer about special education and how there's school districts that institute the suspension, especially on children of color, Latino and African-American, but also, a big portion of that also has to do with children who have special education needs that aren't necessarily identified immediately by the teachers, but how that really sets a child to not succeed and finish high school. And one of my concerns is, I just skimmed through it, and I apologize for not having read it beforehand, is there something to address that in that a suspension isn't immediate, but how do you address children who have these issues? Or perhaps there hasn't been done anything with the family ahead of time to be able to work with the family in saying, "How do we not use explicitly the suspension process in trying to make that kid not want to come back to school?"
To address the students who are receiving special education services, one of the ideas of having a restorative circle is to make sure that everybody who's working with that student is involved in the solution at some point. So you kind of start by getting the adults together, and you look at and kind of dissect, why did this behavior happen? Is there something that we can do, definitely before we get to a suspension for this student, because we've done our research, and we're looking at the IEP, and we're looking at the accommodations and the behavioral history of this student, and really trying to crack the code in terms of how to keep that student in school and in the classroom as much as possible. And I'll kind of defer to Mr. Pratt, but he would certainly prefer to see those students back in the classroom as opposed to even in the assistant principal's office. And so it's even before a student is sent home, what can we do as a restorative circle? What can we do as a team to get that student back in his learning mode?
Just to attach to that, is there, just in the line of work that I do, is there a way that a student would be able to appeal this unfair suspension within the scope of this new program? And because this will affect somebody going to college, somebody applying for a different school or whatnot, do those types of behaviors affect the child academically throughout their entire high school and middle school careers and so on?
So the question was, since you didn't talk to the mic, the question was, is there an appeals process for a suspension?
So one of the advantages of this process is that it allows a thorough process of really identifying the situation, the root causes of the situation. I mean, and one of disadvantages is the time that it takes, but we do that, take that time to ensure that we're looking at all possible angles of situation, and there's plenty of time for both the person that committed an act and the person that was targeted in that act to give, you know, a lot of detail, to give different points of view, perspectives. So there's a real thorough process in making sure that we get the full story, and we look at all angles, trying to get to the root cause of this. So, and if in that process, a student or the person that targeted has many opportunities to bring up, you know, to, if they feel like that it's going in a direction that is not representing them well, there are many opportunities for them to... representing them well, there are many opportunities for them to say so and for us to take a deeper look at that. I hope that answers your question.
And ultimately, of course, ED Code provides for appeals to the superintendent and ultimately even to the board if they believe they were disciplined unjustly. Anyone else before we vote? Michaela?
Two more comments. When you guys are talking about hate acts, you say perceived identity. Could you explain what you mean by perceived identity?
So, well, actually, let me make sure I answer. What section are we looking at?
I believe it's hate acts and hate speech.
I think I can answer that question. It's a hate act, if somebody draws a swastika on your notebook, thinking you're Jewish, even if you're not Jewish, it's still a hate act.
Okay, yeah. We were talking about it in case we were referring to the LGBTQ community in which perceived identity would be your identity.
That's right.
Thank you. The second question is, as this is a living document, could I work with Principal Ritchie and Vice Principal Pratt about the changes that I had suggested to try and instill some of them before it's publicized?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can set up a meeting.
Thank you. No more questions.
Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Again, I'd just really like to give a lot of credit to the admin team and to everybody that participated. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, this brings us to an independent contractor agreement with Millennium Consulting Associates for Hazardous Materials Consulting Services.
Thank you, President Black trustees. I'm going to turn this over to our chief business official, Jackie Kim.
I'm bringing this item to the board today to review and approve the independent contractor.
Hold on, hold on.
You need to get right up close to the mic.
Don't be shy.
This item is to review and approve the independent contractor agreement with Millennium Consulting Associates for hazardous material consulting services for Ocean View School Project. And the expected timeframe is August 2018 to June 2020, and the total amount is $26,363 from Measure B Fund, the bond fund.
Any questions? Questions from the audience? Can we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract with Millennium Counseling. Consulting, sorry.
A second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And an independent contract agreement with Rincon Consultants for Environmental Review Services.
Thank you. Before I turn this over to our CBO, just want to let the board know that we're going to be reviewing in detail all of our contract templates to make sure that there are no typos, spelling errors, grammatical errors, or punctuation errors. I'm going to turn this over to Jackie Kim.
Thank you, Superintendent Williams. This item is to review and approve the independent contractor agreement with Rincon Consultant for environmental review services for Ocean View Construction Project. And the expected timeframe is August 2018 to August 2019, and the amount is $14,888 from the bond fund, Measure B.
Okay, so there are, is it federal law that requires an environmental review of new construction projects? And we are going to ask for a categorical exemption from having to do a full review on the basis that we're rebuilding a school with approximately the same capacity on the same site as a school already existed. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have any questions or comments? Charlie?
So I have one request. I'm looking at their scope of work under Task One, Technical Studies, their first such, it's on page 113, is air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, energy. So my request would be that since they are offering to do an assessment of air pollutant emissions and greenhouse gas emissions, when they've completed that, could we forward that part of the report to the City of Albany Sustainability Committee?
Sure. Yes, we can do that.
Yeah. And then I just note under Cultural Resources that they indicate this will be a small effort, a one-day effort, that should they discover that there are cultural resources that require evaluation, there would be a separate cost and scope to address those needs. And I note that their search radius is a half a mile, and I'm pretty sure that we will learn that there are cultural resources within a half a mile of Ocean View Elementary.
That's about half of Albany.
Yeah, that's about half of Albany. We know that there are cultural resources around Albany Hill. The grinding stones are there. A number of years ago, there were burials discovered there. So I can't imagine that they will discover that there aren't cultural resources within a half a mile. So we should have some understanding that if we are approving this, they're telling us that a larger scope might be required.
Okay. Do you know offhand, Charlie, why it would be such a wide area?
I don't know why they put down a half a mile. That's an interesting question.
Is that a requirement, or is it just?
I don't know. That would be an interesting question, and if it's not a requirement to be a half a mile, I think it should be a smaller search radius, because obviously, what we do at that site does not impact the area at the base of Albany Hill.
I can find that out.
Yeah. Now, if that's what it has to be, that's what it has to be, but it would be better if it were smaller.
When we find out the information, we can provide that in a Friday update.
Okay.
Okay. Jacob?
So are we considering tabling this until, I mean, is it time-sensitive? Because I think it's a very good point that Charlie brings up.
I think this one has to go.
Right, because this one, we expect to have the work starts from August 2018, like, pretty much.
Today.
Right.
What you're saying, Charlie, is if there is remains, it's going to stop.
I have no idea.
I don't think we should vote on it.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what anyone has found other than knowing that quite a number of years ago, there were burials that were found, and there were appropriate steps taken. So I think I would actually be comfortable moving forward if they could come back and change that half-mile search radius to something.
But if they can, then we've already approved it.
Well, if they can't, then I guess we have no alternative but to approve it.
Right. They would have to, I don't think they would have to excavate it, would they, since it's not on their?
It's not on ours. It just.
I mean, all this says is they're going to do a search, and the radius for looking for previous studies and/or et cetera is that half-mile radius. And after they do this, they're going to, whether or not they find anything, they're going to do a cultural resources survey at the site. I mean, it doesn't say upon completion of the record search, if something is turned up.
Can we, if you're there sacred lands, will determine if any?
It's a record search.
You just scrolled past where I was reading.
To address those needs.
Yeah.
Adjacent to the study area, you're going to conduct a cultural resources survey of the site. No archaeological testing or excavation will be conducted as part of the survey, nor will any artifacts, samples, or specimens be collected. It will be done in one day, but one, right, it is just, should any additional resources be identified during the survey?
That's the part.
Prepare a separate cost and scope to address those needs, site recording, site evaluation. So, right, there wouldn't be any such needs on the site if they found something that was off the site.
I don't know what this means.
I'm also looking at where it says they'll prepare a separate cost and scope. So I believe that even if we approve this tonight, if there were additional costs, we would have to bring that separate cost and scope to the board for approval.
Right. It would have to come back to the board.
Yeah, my read of this is kind of like, the initial cut for an area will inform the person what they're looking for. You know, FYI, you know, aloney settlements in this area suggest that we should be concerned that there may be aloney settlements or artifacts of, et cetera, on the site. And I think they would probably pretty quickly agree that there have been sites around the area and that this area has been under concrete for 50 years and may or may not have anything there. It, 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 there isn't anything that, you know, if it were 50 feet or 50 miles, it doesn't, there's sort of disjoint. The first thing sort of informs the person looking, look for this sorts of stuff.
But I think, I think that's right, that we'd be okay, because if they did have additional scope, they would have to bring a new contract back to the board, and we could discuss it and decide at that point whether to approve it. Kim?
Can we approve this contract so that initial work could go forward, but also ask them if this half-mile radius is required, or if it's possible to reduce that? And then we could bring back an amended contract if that, if that was possible.
Sure.
I would like them to be able to get started on the necessary work, but I also don't want to pay them for work that doesn't need to be done.
Well, as I think about it even more, we, I don't think did this for the middle school annex, which is probably the same distance from the place I'm thinking of. You know, I'm not quite sure why, you know, why we've done it for one and not for the other. So if it's not required, I guess I'm just puzzled.
Yeah, it's probably a different, who did the middle school environmental review? Do we know?
I don't know that offhand right now. We probably could find out if we did do it with somebody else, and if not, why not? I don't know if it has to do with the fact that we're doing an entire school site versus a wing or an annex, but I would, I wouldn't think that one would make a difference to the other. I don't know if there's new.
Yeah, what I guess I'm wondering is, in the case of the middle school annex, we simply are building a new school building on top of what had been a school building, and we're pretty much doing that in the case of the Ocean View project. This new, new design is going to be pretty much sitting on top of where the existing building is.
Doesn't extend it out a little bit farther towards?
It probably won't, you know? So, and it actually may not, if indeed we proceed with the design as it's been discussed, we're just going to be retaining the buildings that exist along the creek and not really doing too much with that area. So if it's not necessary, this isn't much money we're talking about here. They're talking about one person doing a one-day search. So I don't particularly want to hold that up. I just also don't want it to turn into something much that delays our project.
Yeah, I think that we can, we'll definitely contact the company to see if they can narrow the.
Richard, just.
And to find out if it's.
It's not a Sequo requirement.
If it's not a Sequo requirement, maybe we don't need to do that one.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, audience?
One thing. I just want to point out that there were comments on this contract when it appeared previously in front of the board from a community member who is involved in her professional life with Sequa documents. And I wanted just to give some appreciation to our community members who examine the agenda packets and write the board and the district and give us a heads up, because this community member said, you know, I think this is running a little bit high. I think you should ask them to look at their numbers again. This is just a negative certification. And indeed, I see that this contract, when it reappears, is for $4,000 less than it was previously. So, you know, everybody, keep your eyes out, communicate with us, and we can get better contracts made. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Do we have a motion on this contract?
I move that we approve this contract with the understanding that staff is going to contact Rincon and about the issues raised.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Jacob?
Just wanted to add one thing before we move on to the next one. I want to thank him for pointing out that, I guess, a resident noticed that some of these prices were a little bit high, and I would encourage staff to actually look to, to try to find us the best possible price, because if we have Albany residents who looked at it and saved us about $5,000, hopefully in the future with our new CBO, we can get the best possible price on everything.
Yes.
Good, thank you. We have our annual school assignments. I don't know that we actually have to vote on this, but it is under review and action.
Thank you, President Black. So annually, the board chooses its school assignments, and if you see on the details, this is the 2017-18 school assignments for the board's convenience, so that you can choose which schools you would like to be assigned to this year.
Okay, so when we have our reorganization in January, what we've traditionally done is, any board member who is no longer on the board, one of the new members takes their school. It might only be one person, and then they'd be taking my school. Jacob?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I just noticed some people have multiple ones, so I don't think it's a good idea for one new board member, however many, to actually have to have two school sites. So if we can just keep that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Sure. Charlie?
Yeah, actually, what makes sense to me is we just stay with what we have through December and then reconsider it in January afresh.
We could just change schools in January. Normally, one board member stays with the school through the year. Any way you want to do it, you know, it's, I'll take last, you know, whatever's left at the end, because I certainly won't be with the Pavilion Tower year. Jacob?
Yeah, I've had the pleasure of working at the middle school and Ocean View or being assigned there. I would like another one.
Okay.
And if, talking about preferences, the Albany Children's Center would be my first, and the high school would be my second. It's a preference.
Right. The reason that some members have two schools is because there are more schools than board members.
I mean, I could do both of them. I'll definitely.
Well, and the reason that I had high school and McGregor is they're co-located, given that it's, I think in.
I guess that makes sense.
As we divvy them up, I think Albany Children's Center was kind of the last one on the table, and Charlie offered to take it on as well, so.
But actually, if you, you know, if you would enjoy doing that, I don't mind swapping.
I did have one thought since Kim actually asked me about this earlier. Cornell, I guess, and Albany Children's Center are the only schools on the list that are not part of the building program. And whoever is coming on to replace me might not want to be thrown into the building program in their first half year. So it might make sense for me to take Cornell for the first half of the year, or we could go with the other suggestion and just change schools in the middle of the year.
Whatever. Yeah, whatever it is.
My thoughts on this is that my, I would be okay staying with what we have now. I know that Jacob wants to change. I think he should have an opportunity to change. So given that, my, my first choice would be the high school, and my second choice would be the middle school.
Okay.
Maybe we should, I mean, maybe we should just all...
Sounds like, actually sounds like we're kind of talking ourselves into changing.
Yeah, I mean, we could always change later, you know? I mean, it could be a little bit of change, a little bit of difference on the board, and it could be a huge difference. I mean...
Right, so we've had... Okay, so Jacob, your first choice was...
Children's Center.
Children's Center. Your second choice was the high school.
Correct.
Kim's first choice was the high school.
Right.
So Kim, would you take the high school and McGregor?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, I think they should stay together as a pair.
Good, okay, so Jacob, you can take the Children's Center.
I just, I love all the schools, I just, I'm pretty familiar with Cornell. That's where my kids go. And my son just, actually not anymore. That's where one of my children goes. My son's going to the middle school, and I've worked there, so if I was to take two, which I'm willing, it's Charlie, it looks like he took two last year, and so did Ross. Yeah, so I guess then it would be the Children's Center and Marin, I guess.
Okay, well, let's see what Ross wants to take.
I have no strong preferences. I'm not recalling, you know, I, I know I had Ocean View, I know I had the high school. I think I had Marin and maybe the middle school. I don't think I've had Cornell. I could take Cornell for not having had it. Yeah, I'm wondering if I had had it.
Of course, the principles of some, most of these schools have changed probably since you had them.
Yeah, let me, let me take last draw after everyone else has got a preference. Or ahead of you, I guess, if you're only up for a half-year.
You shouldn't have to because you were, wasn't a good player. Or I brought up, heard about the new...
Right, I shouldn't have two schools because, right.
Preferably maybe not the construction one.
Well, that was a thought, it's not that...
It actually sounds like Ocean View is open. I mean, Jacob and I could basically just swap it. And I, I could take Ocean View since I'm participating in the design committee, that's a logical connection for me.
Yeah.
Right, but Jacob, you wanted the ACC and something other than Cornell?
Well, I just think it's my turn to take two.
So what else is left? Marin, as you said.
Yeah, if, if that could work.
Yeah, that would work.
All right, so we have Kim with the high school and McGregor.
I think ACC is not a big burden, they don't have side council meetings.
ACC and Marin to Jacob.
So I think that makes sense, sure.
Ocean View to Charlie, which tracks very well with the construction project.
No, I got the high school.
Cornell and middle school.
Middle school and Cornell, yeah. And Ross, I can do two if you'd...
So why don't I take the middle school and Paul takes Cornell till the turnover?
That sounds good.
Somehow, I'm not sure this is adding up. Is there one that we've missed?
Julie, can you read back to us what we got?
So Marin would be me, right? Are you just...
Oh, you're doing two, that's, that's...
I haven't.
Yeah, okay.
I have Jacob with ACC and Marin, Charlie with Ocean View, Paul with Cornell, and then the new board member would take over, Ross at AMS, Kim at AHS and MAC.
Yeah, that's what I've got.
Okay. Did you get that, Julie?
You don't have to do it now.
Well, it's, it's good.
Okay.
Marin would be me.
Do you want me to do it again?
Yeah, do it again.
ACC, ready? So let me know when you're ready. ACC is Jacob Clark.
Okay.
Ocean View is Charlie Blanchard.
Got that.
Marin is Jacob Clark. Cornell is Paul Black. AMS, Ross Stapleton Gray. And Albany High School McGregor, Kim Trutain.
Yeah.
And actually, HHS and McGregor really should be, we put on one same line.
No, it's okay.
They're different schools.
McGregor is a different school.
Different schools.
Different school, okay.
Different schools, okay.
Keep it on separate lines.
We're good. So these are the proposed school assignments?
Afternoon.
Right.
At least the one new board member, someone comes on and feels strongly, we can always...
We can always change, sure.
Absolutely, yeah, and I guess we do have an action of approval of these assignments as we've all...
Right, so do we have a motion to approve this?
I move we approve the assignments as displayed.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and I think our last item is our annual committee assignments.
Thank you, President Black. So this one, I have the current committees, and there are a couple committees that did not meet, but we are going to resurrect some of those meetings. So you'll see the committees that are currently being filled by board members at this time.
All right, so I should point out that traditionally, the two-by-two-by-two meetings are attended by the president and vice president, as they're attended by the mayor and vice mayor, which means that it would change at the time of reorganization. Jacob?
Is that just kind of the way it's always been, or is it actually written somewhere?
It's not written anywhere, it's just the way it's always been.
Okay, because maybe at some point we can discuss that.
Well, of course...
I would like, I would like to discuss that, not now necessarily.
Well, and, and a part of the board retreat is discussing governance issues, so I think that's a fine time to talk about it.
Good idea.
I'll just note, I don't think I've actually been on the board policy committee this year.
This year, since school started?
Well, no, 2017-18. I wasn't on it, so I'm not sure who was, but...
You weren't?
Not that I know of.
I swear you were in the room.
That was different, that was, that was not... Oh, now wait a minute, maybe I'm...
This is the policy committee meeting?
I think you were.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To review board policies?
We didn't do much.
We talked about vaping and other fine things.
Oh, then you were there, Ross, because I was there.
Well, if you and Ross were there, then I wasn't.
Yeah, I think, I, I, right, rather than Charlie, I was the stucky on board policy.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay. I'll be glad to continue on the board policy committee unless somebody else is dying to have it.
Yeah, same, same here, unless someone's dying to take up screening our policies.
So board policy committee is Paul Black and Ross Stapleton Gray. Career Technical Education Committee has not been meeting lately. Is it, are there plans for it to meet this year?
Yes, it is supposed to meet this year.
This, I think, will be important, and actually, I, I would suggest that Kim ought to be on it because the high school will absolutely be hosting a makerspace, whether or not it's up and ready anytime soon. And actually, I, I would think there's a happy risk that it might be used even if we're hosting elementary students in the annex, because that room is not intended to be a classroom. It's intended to be a makerspace, it's a CTE space. So I think you and Jeff Castle and folks could have a fine discussion on CTE at the high school.
Yes, that's good idea, Jacob.
Yeah, the high school was my second choice, and I haven't really done too much up at the high school, so...
Want to be on the CTE committee?
Yeah.
Sure, okay, so Kim and Jacob?
The fundraising advisory committee is actually now the PTA and presidents and fundraising advisory committee, it's, it's a...
Roundtable.
It's, it's a roundtable now, so just so you know, there's more people involved.
And we've added the PFAB as another group.
So what's that?
I'm fine continuing with that. It's on my calendar.
Yeah, and these are evening meetings, like five and after? Yeah, I, that works with me, so I'd be happy to stay on.
I'm, I'm going to say for the LCAP committee, I think that would be a great committee for a new board member to be on. You really get into what the board does on that committee, so I can continue on the committee till we have a new board member, and then they can take over for me. Most of the work's done in the spring, anyway. So who else wants to be on that?
I'm, I'm happy to continue with Charlie on both the Ocean View and entry school design team and also the Sustainability Integrated Design Committee. Those kind of go, those work well together.
They go together.
And I'll, yeah, I'll also keep my position on the Wellness Advisory Committee.
I'm sorry, we, we didn't finish with the LCAP.
I can do that.
Oh.
I can do that.
Okay.
Or, did you want to?
No, I just wanted to jump in, the committee I'm on with Kim, the Wellness Committee, looks like we're getting real close to doing some good things.
So you want to continue?
I would love to continue.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think we're continuing everything.
I'm sorry, Jacob, which one? The Wellness?
The one on the bottom, yeah.
Thank you.
So Charlie volunteered for the LCAP.
Mm-hmm, and I know for the OV design team, continue with Kim and Charlie, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So it's Sustainability, I have...
Technology Advisory Committee's not meeting much anymore?
No, it has not.
So we need a second person for the Wellness Committee?
No, we have, we have second for Wellness. We need a second person for Sustainability unless Charlie wants to continue.
No, no, I can continue on that.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if we need to continue with the Technology Advisory Committee. I can check with Dax.
Dax didn't seem...
He didn't seem to think so, so that's a committee that we, we could...
Might not need it.
We could, we could put it on hiatus for a year. I'd hate to take it away completely in case it needed to resurface in a, in a subsequent year.
Okay, so for the Wellness Advisory Committee, Kim wants to be, I mean, Jacob wants to continue on that?
With Kim, she's like...
You want to continue on that also? Okay, let's make sure that nobody has more than they can handle, because Kim's on a lot of committees here.
Okay, so I have two-by-two-by-two, president, vice president currently, board policy committee, Paul and Ross, CTE, Kim and Jacob, fundraising advisory committee, PTA, Charlie and Ross, LCAP, Paul and Charlie, Ocean View design team, Kim and Charlie, Sustainability Integrated Design, Kim and Charlie, Wellness, Kim and Jacob.
Okay, Kim, are you confident you can do all that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm pleased with my assignments.
Okay.
So I certainly recall Navin joining us for the policy committee meetings, and I would presume that our student board members are welcome to sort of latch on to any as they choose as available.
Of course, is any you want to come to?
We were actually wondering if we were supposed to be signing up for the...
So, so the deal is, because of the Brown Act, I don't think you've been trained in yet. We can't have more than two board members on any committee, but since you are not, your advisory, your vote is advisory, so you do not violate the Brown Act by being on a committee...
I don't think they violate, if, if we have three out of seven, it doesn't violate.
It does, because their vote is only advisory. So it only takes three to pass a motion and not include the two students.
They're not one of them, they're not one of them.
So three out of seven is not a violation.
No, it's three, it's three out of us, five.
So, so one student board member plus two regular board members shouldn't be a Brown Act violation?
It's a quorum, and having two regular board members and one student board member does not constitute a quorum.
Because they're non-voting members.
Because they have only an advisory.
Long way to saying that they would be welcome to show up.
It's okay, yeah.
I think I'm, but I, I think we're saying the same thing. Why can't they be named to a committee?
They can.
They can be on, they can show up for any committee they want.
Can they be formally named?
Yes, we can, if you want to volunteer for them. Jacob?
Yeah, just some, some advice, I know you guys are so busy with school, like, so for example, if there's something you're really, really passionate about, I would say sign up for that one. But if you just kind of want to check it out and maybe go to the other ones which suits your schedule, because they are different days of the week, different times, so like if you said, "I want to go this one," and they're Mondays, and Mondays is really bad, but like they were saying, you can always show up whenever it works for your schedules.
And, and just to add to that, thank you for sharing that. Some of these committees don't meet every month, some meet quarterly.
Is it possible to, if we had like two we were interested in, to sit in on some, or two, and then decide if we wanted to join?
Absolutely.
I'd say the important loop to, to make sure we get is that we'll get added to mailing lists for these committees and not get the other ones. Let's make sure the student members are alerted to all of this schedule so that they can show up as they might want.
Right, and I was just thinking about the mailing list as well. So if there are any of these committees that you're particularly interested in, let's put your name in now, and then we can be sure you're on the mailing list for that committee.
Could I be put on the Wellness Advisory?
You can put them on all of them if you, if they want to.
Or if you, if you want to, we have a student board member orientation coming up, so if you want to think about it, or talk to me about what each of the committees do, or talk to anybody about what the committees are.
We can do that, because it's next week.
What's that?
Since it's next week, that'll be...
Right, so it gives you a week to kind of think about what you want, then when we do the orientation, you can tell me which committees you want to be on, we'll get you on the mailing list.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so again, this is under review and action, so we need a motion to approve the committee assignments for this year.
I make a motion that we approve the committee assignments for 1819.
A second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, and Julie, it would really help if you could mail the, the list out, because I didn't write it down and I might not remember which committees I'm on.
I don't think it's changed, Paul.
Very...
I still might not remember.
We'll email it to everybody, absolutely.
Thanks. This brings us to agenda items, matters introduced by the board.
And we have one, and that is for a report on the SALPA Community Advisory Committee. I recommend that we do that in the spring. And by the way, I do attend as many of those meetings as I possibly can because I do sit on the SALPA board.
Good, Charlie?
So I'd like to put in a request for an agenda item if there's somebody else interested in it. You know, in the interest of public agencies supporting each other, I'd like to hear a report about the measures that the city is putting on the November ballot, so that we could discuss those and possibly consider whether or not the board would want to approve a resolution of support for those measures.
That's a great, great idea, I, I second that.
Usually I, I'm sorry?
Would have to be soon, since the ballot's in November.
Yes, that would be one, when is it soon? Second is, I usually connect with the city manager, and usually it's the board president who does connect with the mayor, although the mayor and I do have meetings. I can reach out to the city manager to see who would come and do a presentation. Does the board have its desire of be the mayor of the city, city manager?
Whatever doesn't violate election code. I mean, at a certain point, the city resources cannot be used for certain measures, you know, if the city...
They can, they can, facts, they can't...
Right. They can't argue in favor or against, and...
So just to provide information.
It's pure factual.
I will reach out to the city manager.
On their part is to provide information, on our part, it's, actually, we need to discuss whether we would want to develop a resolution of support.
Right. Okay, Ross?
Yeah, not, not an agenda item, but I guess a, a note to staff. In talking with folks, among other, for among other reasons, getting nomination petition signatures, a lot of people mentioned Tilden as a school, as an alternative, as a last resort for some of them. Kids taking math at Tilden, kids taking courses they didn't want to take at Albany High at Tilden. And I think it would be hugely instructive if the district could sort of reach out and talk to Tilden. I would love to know how they see themselves as an alternative to the public school. I believe, from what I'm hearing anecdotally, that their enrollment is going up. I would not want there to be, you know, people feeling like they had to be an exodus out of, out of here. I'd also, last year, talked to a, a parent who was very involved in PTAs whose kid's going to St. Mary's because they're fearing the budget cuts. So I think more awareness of the alternative schools in our area would be hugely important, especially Tilden, because everything I'm hearing, you know, people are flat-out saying, rather than take math at the high school, they're taking math at Tilden. I, I'd love a little investigation of that situation.
Kim?
I will, I will second that, and I want to be specific that what I would like to see is I would, I think that we can pull from our records the high school students that have transferred credits from Tilden, and so seeing that over the last five years would be informative. would be informative, because I think we should look at how many students were there before we, before the math pedagogy was changed. So what it was then and then what it is now after the change. And I'm interested in all credits, not just math, but how many credits are being transferred from Tilden to achieve AHS graduation.
Mike Allen?
Yeah, I think that it would also be helpful if we talked to students and found out why so many of them are transferring to Tilden. I know that many pairs of mine have been doing that for various different reasons, but I think it would be important for us to understand why they're doing that and hopefully have that influence some of the changes that we're making.
Thanks, Charlie.
In the interest of full disclosure, I just want to mention that I have a family member who's teaching at Tilden. My daughter is teaching there, so just full disclosure there. What interests me in particular is that it's a one-on-one teaching model. I'm particularly intrigued by this approach, and I would, I would be interested in learning more about how it works and how it could possibly work in the public school system.
And I suggest we have a field trip to Oxford in England in order to...
I would suggest that whatever, whatever y'all do, it'd be done diplomatically, because they are a, another school and another resource, and people are going to be opting to them for various reasons. You know, our elder daughter went to college prep at the private school, and our younger daughter is going to be graduating, we really hope, from Albany High this coming year. And for those kids, it worked out the way it worked out, the particular circumstances. Tilden is, for some people, the best option, clearly, and for others, it is not affordable. And what I really don't want to be doing in shepherding a public school system is, is moving more towards a sort of pay-to-play thing. You know, ideally, we're going to be offering as good an education as you could get in the Albany schools, and reality means we can't, and I'd like to be, to come down as best we can in that middle ground.
Okay, so I want to make sure that I've captured specifically what the board is asking. I'm taking notes on three. The number of AHS students over five years who have received credit from Tilden Prep and disaggregated by subject area, not just math. Second, information on how the one-to-one teaching method works at Tilden Prep. And the third one was, talk to students who either, I'm assuming, currently attend AHS who are getting credit from Tilden Prep. To find graduates might be a little bit, I'm trying to think of like my staff who are going to be doing this, unless the students would, student board members would like to take on that task, to talk to students.
We can definitely do that. I was also wondering, is it just transferring credit from Tilden Prep or also BCC, because that's, I think, more common?
I think with BCC, actually, I really like that idea, because with BCC, they're getting college credit. It's like a dual enrollment.
Some, some do the language, too.
And they get college credit, or they get the dual credit, right?
Yeah, they get both.
Fulfilling their language requirement, doing ASL, I think, at BCC in particular.
So do you want to take on the student?
Yeah, we can do that, definitely.
Thanks.
And I'd say, not going in, you know, with any prejudgment as to the goodness or badness of this, but certainly getting a better handle on how it's working. And some things, we know unilaterally, we can know how many people have transferred credits to us. Others, I'd say coffee with the head of school might be a very fine thing to do. I think the new head, the head of school is new as of a couple of months ago, so more diplomatic than confrontational, I'd say.
Okay, so if there are no objections, we're going to adjourn three minutes early.